Call the meeting to order. If anybody in the audience has trouble hearing us, just let us know. So pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL chapter thirty A, section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. Agenda items listed are those recently anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and school committee recorder. And the Burser Edge and will be broadcast on T CTSB. Once transcribed and approved minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So we're going to start with an executive session. Which? Is under um for the purpose of negotiations, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, number two and three. Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A. Two and three to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations. Holding this discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on negotiations. Immediately following the executive session, the school committee will reconvene its regular meeting. So do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So.
Second, so I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Uh roll call vote. Uh Bill vote.
Hi.
Anne.
Yeah.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie is not here?
No.
Okay, Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Hi.
Rich and I, it's unanimous.
We're done with executive session and and we're back. Uh apologies in advance for our audience. We're having some issues with. Uh our our technology, so we'll make it work and if. Uh if at any point you can't hear us, uh raise your hand and and we'll we'll try to make it be be better.
Okay, so let's. Move ahead. To uh write in the superhelmet report.
Okay, so um a couple things that I like to start quickly with the roses and thorns and and. I don't often take a lot of time on this, but but I have a couple things I like or three things I'd like to share. Um. I'd like to thank Steve Soul and his crew. You know that the power was out at the high school. A sixty-year-old. Transmission line failed um under Route seven. Uh and and that's a big deal. Um and Steve and his people um uh. I don't know what the past tense troubleshooted or troubleshoot it. Um and uh and figured it out. Uh he had two guys drive out to Boston. To get uh eight thousand dollar custom braided uh new cable. Uh and then a guy from um National Grid uh was in a manhole for the better part of eight hours. Pulling uh that cable through um. Um uh conduit from the utility pole on the other side of Route seven by the transfer station. Up and then up to the school and then Chris Hassid, our electrician. Uh and some other folks uh reconnected it all and it worked. The other thing I didn't mention was the the power went out on. Like two o'clock in the afternoon um uh by and our little in-house generator kicked on and then within like. Five hours Steve rented a. Uh really major generator uh and as luck would have it. Uh this was going into the second day of biology MCAS testing. Uh and from a student and staff perspective. Uh it was essentially seamless, so. Uh I can't think of of uh anybody who could have pulled that off, so thank you, Steve, very much. Um so a couple other things on on my end. Um you know, we've been doing uh searches for all sorts of roles. It's my pleasure to announce that. Uh we've hired Colin Shebar as our next Director of Learning and Teaching. Uh Colin is finishing up a three-year stint up at Mount Greylock as an Assistant Principal. Uh there, he did an administrative internship in the Franklin Schools uh before that. Uh uh he taught in Franklin uh for a total of five years. Uh at a a program for gifted and talented students in Springfield for. A year and at Long Meadow High School for a year. Uh and when he was a teacher, his background was in social studies, so we're. Really excited to welcome Colin as our new Director of Learning and Teaching. Uh we've also appointed our uh our instructional coach who's Beth Cook. Uh Beth Cook is known to many of you as a very strong uh biology teacher at the high school, so she'll work as an instructional coach. Uh and and part of the agreement is she has the the right to return to a teaching position in the future if you. Uh would want to do that, but we hope she stays in the role for a while. Um and then the third one is uh we also hired and I did this interview with Iona. Uh and and a couple ESL teachers and members of the. Um Spanish-speaking community, but we've hired Martha Escobar. Who's currently a paraprofessional at the high school and and really well-known in the community and connected to the Latinx community. Um um and and also has a radio show in Spanish and local radio uh to be our new um. Our new family liaison, so uh I I couldn't be happier about these three hires. Uh so let's let's go to the schools. Anybody here from the elementary school? No. Uh there there's a personal thing going on, so that's why Katie's not here. Um things are going well at the elementary school. It's like the end of your craziness like in all schools and there there are lots of events and concerts and ceremonies. Uh and uh and uh field days, so that's good. Uh Miles is here, our new, our current Assistant Principal, but days away from being the. The principal at at Du Bois and Miles, what do you what do you got to share?
If anyone can hear Miles, please raise your hand.
Yeah.
Uh I'm actually very happy with the way things are going. At Little School, we have. Uh a typical amount of staffing churn uh for the end of the year. We've uh done interviews now for. Our open music position and we did interviews this afternoon for our open science position and I'm. Uh optimistic on both of those fronts, uh although nothing is obviously confirmed yet, um but it's looking good. Uh we had a successful concert um last night for the chorus. Uh earlier this week on Tuesday, uh seventh grade uh human teachers uh. Completely under their own motivation held their meeting on our parents and students to come together and talk about. Uh the culture of that grade and continuing to build the culture of that grade as they are transitioning to being. Eight-grade students um and several different parents have reached out to me to say how thankful they were for the hard work that the. Eighth grade team is doing um and that they really felt like the teachers went above and beyond there to do that. Um. All that being said, we're rolling towards the end of the school year. Uh graduation is next Wednesday for our eighth graders. Uh who are gonna be moving up the hill next year and we plan the fun awards breakfast. We are. Uh bringing back uh one of our pre-COVID traditions of the uh awards breakfast that always every year before COVID. We have the ask the seventh grade parents to provide a nice breakfast on that last day of school for the departed eighth graders, since this is the first year. We're gonna be doing that again, so it's just. One of these post-pandemic phenomenons where it feels really good to start picking these things back up again now that we can. Um whatever they put out there and the seventh grade families have really uh brought it, um so we're gonna have a nice breakfast that day.
Okay, great. What what I'm gonna do now is transition to the high school and and I think from a sound perspective, uh I'll. Drop my laptop over next to uh Mia and Maddie. Uh and then going forward, once I get it back at some point, if if somebody wants to speak, I'll pull a chair up next to. Uh my thing and and people can do it right right there. Okay, so let me just bring this over. Over to you. And just adjusted as you.
Okay, um so I would say, I mean, I guess you could say that um. One of the thorns for this week and last week was. Um you know, the power going out, but definitely arose was that we were able to get it on back on so effectively and quickly. Um and then we had graduation last Friday, or was it the Friday before that? It wasn't on Friday. Sunday, one of the days. It it happens. And yeah, I'll pass it on to Mia. I really need to turn the camera. Um so we had junior awards this Monday, uh which were really lovely, so thank you, Ms. Freena, for that. Um and then tomorrow, the junior class will be taking a field trip to Camp High Rock. We'll be. Boating, I guess, swimming, doing field day type activities, so that should be fun. Sorry.
Uh so I will share just a couple more items. Um we had our second uh parent DEI advisory meeting this week. Uh we've had a wonderful group of parents uh joining us for that. Um Keith Wright and I met with this group. I feel like it was a very productive meeting. If anyone is interested in more information, I. Welcome anyone to reach out to me. I've created a parent DEI advisory parent square group where I've posted our minutes and I've posted the action steps that we're working on as we look into next year. Um and so we want to keep opening that up for more people to join those conversations. Um and then I also, um it's in the personnel report, um but we um did have a retirement uh that. Uh Bill Florak in our Horacul program has announced that he is retiring and so. Uh I want to wish him well and thank him for all of his service with us for all of these years. Um and it'll be, uh he's got some big shoes to fill and so we're posted that position. Um and that's kind of a thorn because we're gonna have to be filling that. Um but we do wish him well and appreciate everything he did, so.
Okay, um so um thank you all for for sharing that. Um what I'd like to do now is uh introduce Bronley Boyd. Bronley. There you go. Oh, there we are. Uh so uh Bronley's a current tenth grader. Uh and he's been doing an independent study and some research. You might remember Bronley from his uh being part of a a presentation. Just about a year ago, I know almost exactly. Yeah, same same day last year. Uh so uh Bronley did some really good work. He's gonna. He's gonna uh talk about that work uh and and I'm sure you'll have um um uh lots of uh questions and reactions to it.
I have some slides that I'm gonna present, right? And how best would that?
Yeah, you can do that here.
All right, um thank you, everybody, for just giving me some time to talk to you all tonight. Um again, you may remember me from last year. Um and work with the student advisory board and also uh work with my peers to kind of come up with a report that we brought to you guys. So coming into the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as a sophomore. Um the subcommittee that I work with, known as the Academic Advancement Subcommittee of the Student and Adult Advisory Board. Worked to um continue that um student-teacher relationship as we talked about last year. We want to make sure that adults and. Um students are both heard in the conversation when we're moving forward. So um that was always making, that was our um main goal to make sure that that collaborative was always there. We also functioned as a way for students to come to us if they had questions. Um about anything academic related um throughout the system or what have you. Um and we would either answer that one-on-one, bring it to administration if we didn't know the answer. Um or we um also created a bulletin board that allowed for um kind of a broader share onto the whole entire student body. Um from the administrative standpoint, in order for these competency-based learning systems to work, um as well as de-leveling. Um it was noticed that there needs to be um a focus on effective elements of instruction before moving forward in the um development in competencies. So um in order to better understand how that looks. Um I decided to take an independent study um and understand how the school system um works. To um in relation to these um effective elements of instruction and all of the data that we collected was based off of five elements of effective instruction from. The Great Schools Partnership. Um and. From there, I just want to give you guys just a quick um. Rationale behind my work. So. We um when we're doing this work, we want to make sure that um. Again, there's always that um partnership between adults and students. Um it's something that's stressed very um much at Monument and um makes the school grow in a better way. School redesign, um it's important because that's the faith we're in right now. And um when we're doing the leveling up now, is what we call it in the proficiency, their competencies. Um it only works with effective teaching, so to to know where we need to go is very important. And then growth. Um. If we, if again, if we want to move forward, we need to understand the baseline before we can do any work. So this allows for um going through the summer and into next year, how do we know how best to progress? So what was the methodology behind my work? Um. There were a few steps. So to start, um we used, we created a survey. Um I had the help of um Elsa Hernandez, who was extraordinary with this work. Um and she has a fellowship with um the state through the redesign group, which. Um I actually was lucky enough to speak to yesterday um at a conference at Holy Cross and the rethinking grading um conference had the. Associate Commissioner of College and Career Technical Education from DESI, who was very excited about this work and wants to continue to work closely with us, so. That was exciting for me, but also um the school as a whole. Um so from that work of the um elements of effective instruction, we distributed a survey. I had six students that helped me out there. I had three sophomores and three freshmen. Um the goal of this work was at the end of every period, um they had a QR code and they said, hey, guys, can you take this survey for me? It was about two minutes long, so we wouldn't interrupt the period at the end, right before the bell rung. Um and that was given out eight randoms days from um the beginning of April to the end of May. And then um once we had all that data, um we had about two hundred and fifty responses around, so it was a good amount. Um we had to sort it all, so we broke it down overall by grade and also by department. So we have a clear understanding of what each element looks like. And then um we had to analyze that all. We had to understand what are the trends here and where are the main areas of focus and where are the strengths? Um and then I I moved forward with sharing it out. So again, I was lucky enough to speak to. Um that group at Holy Cross yesterday. Um I'm here now presenting to you all and then hopefully faculty and staff and students as well learn a little bit more later on. Uh as the school year comes to a close and the summer um work continues. So what are the results look like? There's a lot of results. I'm not gonna bore you with the over twenty-five graphs that we created. I want to look at the key data here. Um but again, it just shows the in-depth um process that we took to make sure that this this work is um credible and. Um that we can move forward the best way possible. So there's two main areas that I want to talk about, um which is very content and feedback. And I'll show you just some graphs here for better. Um I know there's some people in the back that it might be hard to see, so the question here was. Um in what ways did you learn today? And there's a variety of ways in which students could learn in the classroom. And it's all based on the percent of student um and the the amount of students that answered a given category. Um. It's important to understand that students learn in a series of different ways, um especially in a um heterogeneous classroom. Um. All approaches need to be met in order for um there to be student success. So when we see a graph like this, you see some trends of um worksheets being common, text and notes being common and teacher lecture being common. Um when we're moving forward, we don't want to see that. We want to see more consistency across all of the ways you can learn because. Um it's important that all of those strategies are meant for students within the classroom. Going along with the very constant materials and instruction, um this graph is about how much the content relates to your own life. So when we look at a competency-based scale. It's a lot about like, where is the relation to your own life and how can you go beyond? Um. Students entered from a one through five scale, so one being the lowest agreement, four five being the highest agreement. Um we see that the trends are mostly in the third category out of five, so they somewhat agree with it being um in relation to their own life. But again, when we're moving forward, we want to see that those trends go towards the fourth and fifth categories more. Um and it's a baseline, so um it's okay that it's there right now, but it shows where the work needs to be done. And then finally, that second area that I was talking about was feedback and feedback. I think it's what resonates with me the most as a student in the classroom and beyond. It's something that um. You start getting feedback as a young child and you bring it throughout your entire life. Um. Ms. Hernandez and I are having a great conversation where um you think about when you have a child and they're learning to eat food and they want to spit it out or put it on the ground and. You're teaching them, they'll pick it up and put it in your mouth. Um so you you see it at a young age and it'll be carried through um all of your life. I was actually recently at a seminar um at Bentley University. Where I got to hear the CEO of the Boston Athletics Association. Speak about his um professional career and leading a successful team. And he said, the key to being a good leader um an individual is. Um all based around feedback, even though he leads a large team, he still wants the feedback because that's how we'll be most effective. So with that being said, if we can see these trends go up and have better feedback within the classroom from your student, uh from student to student, teacher to student. Um that will be much better because it's setting that baseline at a young age and we can progress into the professional career to college, whatever you're gonna do after high school. Um much more smoothly. And then what are my conclusions from this? So there's three areas that I want to talk about here. Um. For me, my biggest takeaways were I learned data analysis. Um I learned how to write good research papers that were distributed to you all. Um and if you want more copies, more information, please feel free to reach out. Um and then when we look at the school. What what do we think the changes need to be there? So um from analyzing the data, um we see that education in the twenty-first century is always changing. But at the same time, for that change to be effective within the school, um time needs to be given. And. We have seen in previous scenarios that rushing to implement a system um leads to hardship without true ownership. And um if we can give that time. The teachers will be more successful in teaching the students how to move effectively. Um and master what they're trying to do, and that's the other point I want to talk on is mastery. Um teachers and faculty, they ask the students in a proficiency-based system to master the subject or unit that they're looking at. Um so if the faculty is going to ask of mastery from the students in the given unit, the same should be said for the teachers. And they should have ample time to reach mastery in each of the given elements of instruction with understanding that time is different for every single person, but that time is needed. And it's not always just checking the boxes to make sure that we're doing everything possible to get to the best place possible compared to the other schools and in um. The region or the state or the country, what have you. And then moving into next year, what would what would that look like? Um from the data and my perspective, it's those two areas I was talking to you guys about before. Um feedback, it's something that again, you're gonna use your entire life, so starting young is very effective. And also varied content, materials and methods of instruction. Not only does it reach everyone in the classroom, but it also allows you later in life, if you've ever hit a roadblock, to um. Move around because you could know other ways to approach a subject. Or um approach a coworker that um you're working alongside with. And then there also are some areas of focus per department. I'm not gonna go through all of them there just because I don't want to draw away from the two areas that need. Um the most focused, but just for an example there, um. The math department, how can we relate the work more closely to a student's life? Um and what do those types look like? It's very hard. I understand that. We see the ELA department excelling in most of these categories because you can get feedback easily. Because you can write about what resonates with you, but um when looking at something like math, which is a little bit harder, how can you show that the work you're doing matters beyond in a career? Um that you'd be interested in. Um I'll take some time now for some questions, um if any.
Um I get my question, it's a very specific one, but on feedback, do you have examples of what that looks like in real life that you've kind of seen or experienced in? Your visits or conferences you've attended and stuff?
Yeah, so um. I mean, again, you see, I see most of my feedback in the English department just because you're gonna have to stay back and you're gonna get feedback on how best do you write. Um from the stuff that I've learned over the years, I relayed back to kind of my younger years where um. The the way in which teachers were approaching me, and I understand it's a different system, but um. It was, what are your strengths strengthened feedbacks by the um middle of the year and the end of the year? Um so giving personal feedback, um even if it's not for every single assignment, but looking at overall, uh if you could have. Conference with a student, if you could have just a piece of paper that you give them and say, hey, these are where this is what I see you doing really well and this is what I see. Um needing to kind of change, and that can be through when we make that switch from a hybrid system to more of a competency-based system. Of what does the rubric look like and transcript look like when you're um making that change? Um again, kind of enforcing how we need to get to that point where we can move to full competency-based scale because we'll want some feedback. That's part of the reason that this switch occurs is because it allows for um a deeper understanding of what um your your standing really is. Um instead of just saying, oh, I have a ninety-four on this.
And is the feedback concept also a side with students getting into teachers?
I would say if we were an effective system, um that would have to be happening. It would have to be student, teacher, teacher, student, student, student. Um so. That's that's how we um we best move forward and that can be worked through the student advisory board. And we have that already laid out, so if we can have students being able to tell teachers what is going well. And teachers telling students in the classroom or on the board what they what needs to change or is going well um would help.
I think that this is a longer conversation, but something that we have observed. I always refer to this quote from John Dewey saying, you don't reflect from experience, you don't you don't learn from experience, you learn from reflecting on the experience. And what we are seeing is that teachers do give feedback. It's that eighty and your test, but it's the end, you're done. It's like now you know all the ways, you don't know the material. Put it in your backpack and move on. So what we're trying is to incorporate feedback while you're learning and while you can do something about it. Instead of being at the end of the process and also. Hopefully, we move towards a formative um assessment where you get feedback during the formative assessment, no penalty, you're given a real time. Checking on how you're doing and then if. You move on knowing what you know and what you don't know. So we do give feedback, but the timing of the feedback is it's really bad. So it's a big hit. I I wanted to mention two things and then uh um so. Um I am I uh I am EL, an IL, um instructor lead and. Um I have some copies of the elements of effective instruction that Bronley was talking about, and so we talked about the five or we we asked. Students about the five. I want to give you the good news. The good news is students gave fours and fives really, really high grades on two aspects that actually were important for us because we felt. We thought we were good at that and actually this thing from the students that we already did good at that was like, okay, we agree. One was creating relationships. Uh with adults in the building. One was creating relationships uh with the adults in the building. And the other one was having clear routines and expectations and knowing with respect when you get to a class. So we adults in the IL teams had also identified the feedback and the varied instruction as the as the key components that we wanted to address. So it was extremely important for us to see that is also the um the perspective of the students. So we can really reflect on what they're saying because it's literally the same. Um, and then the last part is that something more important about this data is that we saw transfer in departments too. So this gives us information to go to math and say, oh, you were really low in adult days to your own life, which makes sense. But now maybe we dedicate one day on, okay, math included online. Automotive was very low in giving feedback, but very high in practice. ELA was high above, in general, they had the best averages. So maybe we can invite the ELA department and be like, what do you guys do? And we don't need us consultants, but we need ELA come to tell how they engage, why are they so, they feel so safe in your classrooms? Why, what what kind of feedback do you do that students clearly get that and we can clearly listen to our students? They're the the ones on the ground.
How do you implement more time in in the school day?
Uh, so my point being there, um I think Dr. Linda can relate to this. We we were in a school um in California in the spring, Mission Vista. And the school was ten years ahead of us. And they were looking at similar elements of effective instruction. Um, right now, Ryan is focusing on feedback. Right now, we're taking a semester. The school took the entire year. So when I'm saying time, I'm saying time for the teachers to understand in a professional development way how best do they teach their students before moving forward to a new element and rushing through, because if we can be slow and make sure that everyone knows what's going on for implementing all of these in the classroom, it will be better for the teachers, which will be better for the students because whatever happens with the teachers triples down to the students. And if there's negative um kind of attitudes from the teachers, then it comes down to the students, but if there's positive, it will it will be better for the students.
So and to be really concrete, like what time do we have to do that? Well, we we've got four whole days for professional development, like two before school starts, one in November, one in March. Uh, we have seven half days that sometimes drive parents crazy, but that's a chunk of time to to do work with uh with our colleagues. We have something on the order of eighteen to twenty uh staff meetings during the course of the year. Uh, in in different schools, it's slightly different, but they may meet uh in in um academic teams sometimes or in grade level teams, uh as many as a couple of times a week, so that's more time. And then and then sometimes we pull people out of school to come here and do other learning and stuff. Um, and then and then we uh invest a lot of time in three to four day chunks for for summer learning. So so that's all some of it, but I think the tension is um don't try to do twenty things in all those times, but try to do two or three things at all those times.
Yeah, okay. I I have a question in regards to um the first one. I am whether, oh, first of all, Bronley, I'm really impressed. And I want just to tell you, I don't know how many. I got some feedback on last year's report and people were talking about, oh, you know, that report was given to the kids who were top of top. You are a top student, but I like the way you included lots of students of that of all levels. I'd like to ask them about methodology. Uh, your survey was given. How was it chosen? Um, I would add to this, did you have a copy of the survey? What was that was given to the kids? Under what conditions was it given? Was it like in a class or was it in a class meeting? Um, that's because that to me is fairly important in regards to how the results were um how the kids responded. Okay, so would you?
Yes, I'm not giving you a copy further of all the data that walks through by question. Um, the survey was given um at the end of the class period through all eight periods of the day. So there was a QR code that the six um participants were given and they were designated as distributors. So um when the when the kind of class was getting ready to leave, they were walking around the classroom and saying, hey, can you take this survey? Um, and the purpose of that being we're in a heterogeneous classroom, so people reach everybody. Um, so that was made sure, again, those eight specific days between April and May gave us this baseline. Uh, and it was twelve questions that took no longer than three minutes. Um, so it was all through, we made sure it was consistent.
And they're they're based on this. The other thing we didn't mention is that our idea is to continue, so say we are dedicating our time on feedback. So let's repeat the survey in February and hopefully we see a ship on that on that graph, right? And if not, we can speculate what or why not, but but this is not yet, this is the baseline. Bronley doesn't know yet.
And and that's really important about looking at this these results. Um, it's not meant to be all negative. Um, there's a lot of positives out of this, but it's important to highlight what we need to do. It's constructive criticism because um that's how we're going to move forward. And we have time, we have time to work through this all. That's why we're looking at it now instead of doing it way down the road when we're already too late into the process.
Good, Mary, can you hand up?
Oh, yeah, um I was wondering, um for this survey, you said that you gave six clinical QR courses throughout. Was um the people that filled out the survey, were they people being affected by the community based learning? Were they sophomores or like multiple?
Yeah, so we made sure to target just sophomores and freshmen because of proficiency based learning. I'm not sure if the professional development is occurring across the board for faculty, and I think it is. But because of where we stand with the changes and redesign within the school, we thought it was most effective to target those two grades and we made sure to keep it at those two grades.
So the only other observation, I know this survey was very student focused, especially on the very content side. It would be interesting to get the feedback from the teachers as well of kind of how they feel in terms of reflecting. Did I lecture? Did I do a work? Did I? Because I feel like because of the fact that students do learn so differently, the way they're reporting could more be picking up just on their kind of predisposition of how they learn and less about what was actually given to them over the course of a class. It would just be interesting, not replace it, but have a narrative.
Definitely, yeah.
APs were over the system?
No.
No, you wouldn't believe these? Nope, this is not right. They just wouldn't. Oh, yeah.
Uh, other questions on this? Um, all right, so Bronley, this is incredible. Uh, and I love that it's not, it's never the end, it's just like the the beginning of the next phase of this, right? So uh we hope to have you back in a year to share the uh updated uh report and uh and and I think I think this is really neat.
It is amazing and you're welcome back in less than a year.
Yeah.
You got data to give us. You you did an amazing job on this and I I may imagine you'll get your doctorate next year. But it's amazing, it's clear, it it's uh it's excellent and we're really looking forward to this commitment. Some college admission directors are going to be old over that.
Thank you. What was the response yesterday?
Um, yeah, so we had a a really good response. Um, I was at a conference with five different schools. Only student there, which is a little different for me, but it was it was a good learning experience. Um, and it was all about what is, it's a it's a pilot group that looks at what does competency based learning look like? So that there can be a policy created that can go to the state level. Um, there were representatives from DESI, the Department of Education for Massachusetts. Um, and um again, that woman that was there, who is the commissioner for college and um career vocational and technical, um was the education.
What's the higher?
She she was really impressed by the work. Um, and she plans to bring the the presentation and results back to her team. Um, if it's going to go to the commissioner, if it's going to go to her team. Um, but she said that we'll be in touch and hopefully that there could be a presentation further to her um larger department.
A and one thing, just so everybody understands how interconnected all this is. Um, Liz Bennett is the person who's going to approve our our early childhood program to move into Chapter Seventy Four program. So if if there were any hesitation, you've put us over the top. On that, so we'll hear in like a week. Uh, and and she runs one of the offices at DESI that continues uh to support us with all sorts of grant funding, uh so I may have to give you a cut of our next grant for that as well.
The growth, I mean, I think the new year, I mentioned that it's staggering and it's encouraging. Um, and I say that to you all through your presentation, but just we'll do this. So just to see the partnership um and the collaboration, I think, between students and the teachers and the focus on you know, constructive and exact is really, really encouraging. So thank you all.
Bronley, thank you very much.
Yeah. Um, so um going forward, uh Christie, Keith and I will be sharing some additional uh data. We're we're waiting till the, we have some sort of early formative data around what's going on with the the leveling up, de-leveling, mixed ability grouping, whatever you want to call it, and honors things, but but we're going to wait till the end of the marking period so we can we can share, sorry. We can share um a year in data. Uh, so the next thing on my agenda is a new job description for a grant funded position. Um, this is the uh in in and we live in the world of of acronyms, but the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging and school culture coordinator position, which is a mouthful. Uh, this uh again, thank you all very much. Um, this position is is uh existed this year in a slightly different form um and is is currently funded through the uh Great Barrington Community Impact Money, uh which is the money tied to um um mitigating the impact of of all the marijuana stuff going on in town, right? So uh what really connects to it is is better supporting marginalized students, better supporting school climate and culture. Just about every day you read something in the paper of of some uh problematic incident in in uh I mean occasionally our school, but but also all our neighboring schools. Uh, and and the the impact of of COVID, the impact is sort of where the world is and what's going on. We see this as an important uh potential antidote to it. Uh, this position will will sort of bookend Iona's position as the Director of Wellness uh a and also work very closely with the family liaison and the instructional coach. They'll all work directly with uh Colin in the Director of Learning and Teaching role. Uh, and and they'll all work across the three buildings, but uh by trying to have strong connections. Um, I I think the job description speaks pretty clearly for itself, but I'm I'm happy to to respond to questions. Um, uh, we also borrowed a a little um um quote about uh uh women and people of color uh not applying for position because they may not see themselves as meeting uh the qualifications. So we wanted to intentionally name that uh and encourage a a a wider range of candidates uh to apply. So again, I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Would you approve?
The second? Uh, Richard and Corey, questions or comments?
What's the existing role now?
Um, the the person who who just stepped out of the role was Beth Walker Thomas and and her background has been as a a social worker, so she was spending uh a little time in the middle school doing clinical work, directly supporting kids uh and and quite a bit of time at at the district level uh with Iona working uh on on school climate and culture.
So will it be grant funding? Grant funding is ended for for this year?
Yeah, it's it's the 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 great, e- every entity has a different fiscal year or or funding cycle. Um, so uh the Great Barrington one, I think, is ends up being like September to August. Right, uh so um the 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 intention would be that that we reapply and continue to get supported. And even though they say past performance is no indication, like it really is, uh and 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 I'm optimistic uh a as a backup plan and and that money's not in hand yet, but but we think our rural aid allocation uh will be between three and four hundred thousand dollars and and that'll get settled in the context of the state budget process, which is sort of in reconciliation right now. So if if there were an instance where we uh didn't receive the community impact funding after September, uh we could come back to you with a recommendation to to use the the uh some portion of the of the rural aid fund then.
Or?
Um, question for Christie, for the TBI group that we apparently we brought home in the high school. Do you feel like what you're hearing in those meetings is embedded in the job description?
Yes, absolutely yes. Uh, we actually talked about this proposal at the meeting. And uh one of the things that came up at the meeting was the need for the foundation of process through buildings relating to this work.
And then a question for Peter, just a lot of the other more recent positions that we had seem to be recording into the teaching and learning position. And this one isn't?
No, i- i- I think it says um uh to me or my designee. Uh, so my intent is uh is, I mean, it's sort of funny. All of those positions, I I do want to privilege a little bit because each one's essential. And a position like this is is uh is particularly important that they have direct access to the like CEO equivalent, right? Uh, and and that's what most institutions do around roles similar to this. Uh, so so I I envision that they'll report to the uh Director of Learning and Teaching and they'll have direct access to me. Uh, and and what what it may end up being in practical terms is they check in weekly with the Director of Learning and Teaching and together they check in with me every other week.
Is this a, um, this is a, is would this position be under Unit A? Is it because I know it's this teaching role?
Uh, no, it's not my intention to have it under Unit A. Uh, uh, there often I do, right? And and they're like the instructional coach, we left under Unit A quite intentionally with with the uh right of of return. I I think there's the possibility that the person in this role um could very likely not be a a certified teacher. Uh, and and that is a largely with with rare exception, uh that's largely a requirement to to be in in Unit A. So so my intent was to to not have it be there.
I guess my other question is, I have some hesitation on you. My hesitation is I haven't read the Stoke report yet. And I haven't, and I think we as a committee, I would like to see the Stoke report and to talk to the people through, we made that report and I I would like to hear how is what this position is fit in with what I haven't seen yet, which are is the report and their recommendations. And so therefore I'm hesitant at this time to vote for this because I haven't seen the Stoke report. I was under the impression that that was going to be given to us by the end of the school year. I don't see a rush in this position because you've just explained, Peter, that the grant funding is until uh September. I I would personally like to see the Stoke report and talk to those people and see what are their recommendations into this position? And how does it fit in with our overall? I'm not, at this point, um I understand the rush. But I feel that I, as a committee member, would like more context within what the district, I'm in favor of what we're doing. But I need more context here in order to vote positively on this position because I haven't seen the In order to vote positively on this position because I haven't seen, uh, the important Stoke report, which we have heard about for, for two years.
I know, so I, I, I don't, I, I, I'm going to respond and my intent's not to be. Um, combative, I, I just want to make a, a case for doing it. Uh, I have seen the Stoke report, it's not public yet, they're still fine tuning it, right? I, I saw a draft of it. So, so the Stoke people, um, i- it's the, it's the folk that's, that have been working with us around. Uh, diversity, equity and inclusion for a couple of years, so. The, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's called the Stoke Collective, so. Um, they're, they're a group of thoughtful people largely based out of. Uh, North Hampton that do a lot of work on, on social justice and, and equity. Um, and, and they, uh, came in and did an initial set of interviews and, and a report a couple of years ago. And have continued to work with us and now they're transitioning out. Um, and, and as they exit, they're sharing, um, uh, a summary of what we've done to date and some possibilities. For going forward, so, um, uh, I, I think Bill, when, when ultimately you read the report, which, which depending on their timing, maybe at our. June, it's either the twenty-fifth or the twenty-seventh, uh, July twenty-fifth or twenty-seventh. Uh, it, it may be then, it may be a little later. I think you'll find this is, uh, aligned and. And, and consistent with, with their findings. Uh, my concern is, um. We do our best work, uh, at the start of the school year when we've had time to do. Significant planning going into the school year, so even if you vote to approve this. Today and, and I get it posted and we do a search process, we're likely not hiring somebody. For four or five weeks. At that point, they, like, we're, we're towards the end of July. And, and they're playing a role in greeting teachers and staff. Three weeks later and setting up things for, for the whole year. If, if we wait till after a July meeting or if the Stoke reports. Shared even later than the, than the July meeting, then we're in a position where we're rolling something out. Um, with staff, uh, in October. And I don't want this to be an add-on, I want it to be really integrated in, into the work we're doing, so I, I don't often, um. Uh, a- ask for. Maybe I do and I just don't think I do, but, but I, I don't think I ask for flexibility a lot. Um, in this, I, I think, uh, approving it and, and starting the process to fill the position. Sooner than later is, is really, uh, advantageous, what. Um, and, and I also think, and, and we don't do, often your votes are unanimous. But, but one sort of way, uh, to still have a unanimous vote is if you have some level of discomfort. Uh, to, to abstain with the notion of getting more feedback, but, but then perhaps if the rest of the committees. What?
Abstention to no vote.
Okay.
They, Bill, to me, the way this reads the responsibilities are general enough that it still allows us to. For this individual to bake in whatever comes out of that. So something like establish measurable objectives and benchmarks. So if they have to establish, well, what those benchmarks and objectives are. Could follow from the report in further discussion, but kind of the general responsibilities. It's kind of so, which will allow us to move forward.
Yeah, you could, you could, if you're concerned at the time, you can make a motion table. And that succeeds as able.
That's a terrible motion because it's not debatable and the whole.
Like to advance his agenda of, of. Uh, information from the Stokes.
But, we, we had, we have a previous, no, 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 it's not a big surprise at all. We, we've been having this conversation for. For two plus years and, and, and we have. Yeah, and they've come and, and talked to this meeting and other things, so, I mean, I think. And I don't want to summarize it because I won't do it justice and I'll steal the thunder, right? But, but in sort of the highest level terms. Uh, I, I think there are a lot of things they're excited about. We, we've got an ambitious agenda. There's commitment throughout the organization to, to trying to do, uh, deep work, uh, opportunities for, for student voice. Uh, are more frequent and more amplified as evidenced by Bronley and other people. Um, and, and, and we have some, uh, focusing to do. Um, a- and, and some additional work. We made progress on, um, on, uh, recruiting a wider, more diverse range of staff. Uh, uh, we're, there're more interesting things in the curriculum, but, but there's a way to go.
I mean, my, my own personal opinion is. You want to come forward with this, if this wasn't. Part of the Stoke report or if it was against what the Stoke report had, or obviously it's not going to be, be the job description, but. And we will get a copy of the Stoke report when it's. How it embargoed.
Right.
Go ahead and then.
Um, do you want to speak out to this? This is something I feel that we, that we do really need. Um, a couple of months ago, we had a furnace increase for the Thomas agree. That's okay. And I. That was a really interesting question for Solis. It was very effective. Got students talking on. The bigger issues throughout our school, um, the ones that were previously not because of. Anybody purposefully doing it, just slept under the rug. Um, and it brought them to light and having like a counselor or coordinator. Who stole job is to keep them in the light and keep. What students are feeling, you know, that it's just viable and it's. It's, I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you, Anne.
The other thing is we're going to hire somebody, this is a good time to do it, and I, it'll be over the summer when. People who are job searching have already accepted something.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
All right.
I. Oppose or abstention?
I'm staying.
So, is it seven? Zero, one vote, you pass it.
Thank, thank you all very much, uh, and thanks for the, the good conversation. Um, so, um, the next two are, are requests to approve two contracts. The, the first one, do you want to do them together separately? Okay, so, so the first one is a, a contract for our cooperative staff and, and all our staff are cooperative. But, but this group is named the Cooperative Group. Uh, and that includes, among other things, um, um, food service employees, custodial maintenance. Um, um, technology, audio visual. Greenhouse, uh, aides. Uh, is that it? Okay, and, and, and that's it. Uh, our negotiations team did. Uh, uh, really nice work on this, uh, and, and our, our challenge is. Uh, we, we always like to have our staff in the top quarter of the county. Um, and, and some of these folks, particularly the entry level position, are least well compensated workers. Uh, and in, in many roles, uh, we, we continue to have vacancies. And our starting rates are, are lower than some, um. Adjacent fast food restaurants and, and that puts us at a, at a, a marked, um, uh, disadvantage. So my hope is that, uh, you, you'll approve this contract.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. Second, of a motion by Bill and a second by Bill, that makes it easier for me to. Any discussion? Hearing out all those in favor? I, I, I oppose. It's unanimous.
Okay.
Do we need a roll down the wall?
We do not. No, because there's nobody. I mean, there, there are audience members online, but there are no school committee members online. Um, so, I, I just want to confirm that.
I think so.
No, no, that's good. So the, the second contract is the, um. Um, contract for, uh, what's called Unit C. And Unit C includes our paraprofessionals, our, uh, facilitators. Our three directed study positions. Our new family liaison position. And our administrative assistants previously known as secretaries. So one of the changes in this contract. Uh, was to change the, uh, secretary title to administrative assistance. Um, this again, uh, we think we're, we're fruitful negotiations. Uh, part of the members represented in this group, the paraprofessionals. Uh, we've had between seven and nine vacancies all year, uh, which is really impactful. Uh, and in most cases, the, the paraprofessionals work with our neediest students. Uh, so having that wage be better, uh, we think will significantly impact our ability to both, um. R- retain, uh, and, and recruit, uh, folks.
And these are both three-year contracts.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, and, and, and these are both, um, three-year contracts, so, um.
Do you have a motion to approve the Unit C contract?
So. Second.
Uh, confusion.
The other.
We have any discussion? Hearing out all in favor? I oppose unanimous. Thank you very much.
Great. Um, so the, the last thing I want to share, and in some ways this, you have a paper copy of it, but in some ways this is more valuable. Um, um, uh, um. Electronically is our, uh, five-year running post-secondary report. So i- if you're comfortable in Excel, you, you can really play around with this and. And, and do some, uh, neat things. Uh, wh- what it has is where students are going. Uh, after, uh, after graduating and it's, it's current, uh, through this year. Uh, what, what we've changed in this year that we didn't used to keep tallies on and we're trying now retroactively to, to populate it. But you'll notice at the very tail end are, uh. Uh, gap years. High school for a fifth year, uh, work in college or just work, right? So o- over time, we'll, we'll have all those categories included. Uh, and, and we'll get to a much higher percentage of. Of, of knowing what, what people are doing or at least they're saying to do. Um, so you can go and like look at your favorite college and. I don't know, uh, i- i- in the last five years, we've, we've sent. Fifty-five students to Berkshire Community College and, and four to the Berklee College of Music and. And four to Endicott and, and there's some other ones that, um, that stand out as popular. Loyola University in Maryland is another four, uh, Middlebury College is another four. Um, uh, Sacred Heart is a five. Uh. Uh, the University of Vermont, a whopping fourteen, uh, the, uh, University of Massachusetts at Amherst is thirty. Um, uh, uh, Western New England, seven, Westfield State, nine. Uh, Whedon College, four, um. Things like that. So I'm really proud of this, that the folks at the, the. High school and all the schools are working extraordinarily hard and the. Uh, the range and, and diverse nature of these schools is really remarkable. Uh, and particularly recently, uh, it's all over the country. It's California and Florida and. New Mexico and, and, and everywhere. There are a couple that say zero because we still keep the data going back farther, so. Nobody's gone to Connecticut College in the past five years, but, but in previous years, uh, several, several students did. Okay, but the, I, I think the raw data in Excel is, is even more fun than the, than the static one. And there are people, three people in the last five years to Hudson Valley Community College, a really strong technical college. Um, several, um, uh, specialized art schools that people are going to. Uh, a couple of students go to McGill up in Canada. Um, uh, this year, the Air Force Academy. Uh, 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 Parsons School of Design. Uh, uh, somebody's going to an aviation school, um. Uh, technical schools in North Carolina, a few years ago, somebody went to Juilliard, uh, on and on and on. Yeah, that. No, no, Delaware's really, I mean, right, and, and if I do shout outs and I always miss somebody, so like, uh, Delaware's great, uh. Yeah, uh, a, a couple to Tulane, a couple to Worcester State, all over the place. Santa Clara. Yeah, uh, and, and also W- Williams, which is in our own backyard. Any questions about any of this?
No.
Yeah, fun. Uh, and I'd stack that up with, with a- any school in the county. Public or private.
Look at work to school, like, look at work to school, and we're, we're as good as. I think you could stack us up against the entire county. Including the private.
Yeah, I, I, I do too. Uh, okay, so appointments, every year we have to appoint, uh, two positions at the district level. Uh, one is the, uh, district treasurer and the one is the school committee, uh, recorder. Uh, it'd be great, I don't know if somebody has a formal motion, but they, they make a motion to appoint, appoint Dick Jetty is the. Um, treasurer and, um, uh, Christine Kelly is the school committee recorder.
You're on, both. Uh, Anne, motion second? Second, second, Bill, second, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
It's unanimous.
Great. Um, so, uh, the next one is, uh, uh. Potential vote on a proposed Farmington River tuition agreement. So. I've explained this probably a hundred times, um, uh, there are lots of ways students can come into our school. One of those ways. Is if, if they don't have the, um, uh. I- if schools don't go past a certain grade level, then, then they need to have a tuition agreement with one or multiple. Uh, schools. Uh, Farmington River, which is the Otis and Sandusfield Regional School District goes through sixth grade. And, and, uh, this is a proposal for a tuition agreement. Um, with them in seventh through, um. Twelfth grade, they go to DuBois for seventh and eighth grade, or their students would, and then. Uh, and then to Monument, uh, for, for the, uh, other grades. There, there are multiple parts to this agreement, so. Um, the first part is for, uh, uh, typical students and the proposed increases would be. Uh, three percent in, um. You know what, I'm, I'm noticing a typo in this already. It just makes me crazy, but, but three percent in the. Uh, it's a five-year agreement, um.
Years at all.
No, I'm sorry, the years are right, it's not a typo, I misread it. So three percent. Increase over this year for next year, three percent for the year after, and then two, two and two. The amounts are slightly different at the, um, the middle school level and the high school level. And they all go up correspondingly, uh, so I, I think that's enough. The second one, um, is, is the, uh, special education rate. Uh, and that's a, uh, uh, a significantly higher rate. Uh, and, uh, and that starts at twenty-six thousand and. And caps out at twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. A- and then there's a, a third sheet, um, which is, uh, uh. I- incremental adjustment that's, that's prorated tied to, uh, whether. Like, the full value would be a hundred percent special education, but our goal as a school district is. To have students in an inclusive environment, so it's, it's tiered going down from a hundred. In special ed to zero in, in regular education to seventy-five, twenty-five, fifty, fifty. And twenty-five, seventy-five, a- and then while anybody could do the math, we did the math, so it's easier to do. Based on a student's placement.
Do I have a motion to approve the tuition and agreements conversion of Hill, Ridgefield School District and Farmington River Regional School District? Oh. Second, another motion by Rick, second by Bill, discussion.
Um, what happens if Farmington River dissolves?
The, then the agreement, in my understanding, and, and any of the lawyers in the room can correct me on that, that. The, the agreement is with the entity and if the entity dissolves, then, then it's time to negotiate a new agreement. Similarly, the.
If you remember, I mean, you, we used to just have a group in Sandusfield before the, before they formed this. Now we had an agreement with a new entity, so.
Right, a- and. Right, a- and if, if we, and we'll talk about the regional school district thing, but if, if we became. Right, and and if if we, and we'll talk about the regional school district thing, but if if we became a uh eight-town district, that then we'd also need. Like reciprocally, we need to revisit the agreement.
Any other questions? All in favor?
I oppose.
It's unanimous.
Okay. Um so the the last one is on the Regional School District Planning Board. Um so the last time we met as a whole board. Um there was an agreement reached on a on a tentative funding formula, and we think the next meeting will likely be. Uh a an agreement on moving forward. There there are always some hiccups and bumps, and there was a meeting. Last night, and some of you might have seen um uh. Eileen Mooney's reporting on that and an email, so I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but. Um uh but it looked interesting, and I I refer you to uh the coverage on that. So Eileen Mooney uh is a a frequent attender of our meeting, she's in the meeting now. Um she she's a a reporter that runs a a publication called The Newsletter. Uh which is active in Great Barrington, and it's sort of, and and I think they both appreciate this. It's kind of like Carol Owens's Stockbridge update in in Stockbridge or vice versa. Yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't have the agenda. Now you get all the facts out there for all the reports again. As one former selectman told me from Stockbridge. It's the only time it's been ever quoted.
No.
And in context.
Um so that's just going off the Regional School District Planning Board. There there'll likely be a vote of that board before the next time that we meet.
We will.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe.
We'll get a vote before the summer's over.
Yeah, uh so uh.
And we're still, now it looks like the split-up meetings probably will be closer to October.
Right.
But still on schedule mostly.
Um so that's it, uh from from my desk.
Self-committee report, policy has not met, building is in ground?
As I remember, we'll be next week.
Uh Superintendent's evaluation?
This is Matt, and we're working on evaluation.
Technology subcommittee has not been dissolved.
No, we did, it shouldn't be there, but we might want to recreate it for the owl.
How about the owl supplement?
The owl supplement.
My name is subcommittee. Different consolidating hearing, we already have the report, communications subcommittee can be up.
No, a lot, oh, this is something I actually needed to ask the group, so the the communications consultants who are running a lot of focus groups and I. I gave them half the names in the school committee to try to schedule something and. Maybe only one person was able to go, uh so I'd like to. Um I I'll do like a doodle poll. Um and see if I can find another time. They'd love to. It'll be a posted meeting, so we don't want foul of the open meeting law, uh but they'd love to get uh feedback from the school committee. They've met with teachers and staff, they've met with administrators, uh they've met with several groups of of parents, so. Uh in in the next couple of weeks, if we could squeeze uh an hour, forty-five minutes, then that'd be great. Uh and then one other thing, I I forgot to mention earlier when Bronley was talking about stuff. Uh we're working very closely with the Great Schools Partnership, and one of the services they have that falls under. The umbrella of what they're doing with us is to uh analyze our policies with a lens towards some of the. Progressive work we're doing uh around um um learning and competency-based education. And meet with us and recommend some shifts in policies we might want to consider entertaining. Uh to to help sustain this work long after we're not the ones sitting at this table, so I thought that was a great offer. Uh and and they have some, a couple of people who worked explicitly on that. Uh and and I think it would be really sophisticated if we if we did that.
Yeah, it's a great. Personnel, probably anything on it?
No, I just, uh I think Bob Hammer's leaving as a custodian and we thank him for his work. Uh and and we're welcoming Colin and the other two were uh were late um late-breaking news. Uh and in terms of the vacancies, um it didn't make it on this, but but we we have a librarian. I think we have an offer to a music teacher, uh and 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 we're making progress with both the. Health instructor and the school psychologist, so next time we meet. Uh the only vacancies we may have are the the para-professional positions. Well, and food service, but but then they'll see the great and and the the rise in position at the high school. Um uh and now a science position at the high school and and a couple others, but but we're making, we're making progress in our hiring. The the only other thing I wanted to mention, and I sort of mentioned in passing last time, uh. Uh we've hired uh Betland Task Young, who was an elementary school paraprofessional. To be a a high school pre-K teacher in that early childhood program. And I'm really psyched about that. One, it's a wonderful person, but two, it's illustrative of people doing the. Parroted teacher pipeline and and starting with us as a para and and stepping into the role. She she did most of this on her own, we didn't do, we don't have a ton to do with it, but but we did host her uh for her student teaching, so. Uh hopefully, she's the first of many future paras who who may consider stepping into teaching. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, any um anything else before the committee, older new business, public comment?
Let me just look for, um if any of the attendees have public comment, just raise your hand.